We're going to have a public hearing. The purpose of this meeting is to listen to people interested or their agents, attorneys, regarding the intent of the city to replace portions of curb and gutter and assess property owners who are involved in the alleyway reconstruction. The project involves parcels adjoining Grand View Drive from Vine Street to 60 feet past Ash Drive and parcel adjacent to the alley north of River Street between Sixth and Seventh. At this time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the City Council about the assessments? Sir, if you could step to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
My name is David Klein. I live at 1302 Sixth Street, Hudson, and I'm kind of speaking for my neighbors here and my wife in the front row. And it's generally agreed that the alley in question is in bad shape and it does need to be repaired. However, the assessment that -- we're asking that you modify your assessment to make it fair, just, and equitable. And these are the reasons that we came up with. When we received the letter on July 17th, or excuse me, July 27th, everybody on that entire block was listed, including the O'Keefe Schmidt family and the Union Pacific Railroad. The next day, we received another letter with the same, with a new partial ID list excluding the O'Keefe Schmidt family and the railroad. And looking up the statute 66.0703 and looking in the Wisconsin League of Municipal Manual for Special Assessments, we did find reasons why the railroad was exempt and taken off. But we don't understand why the Schmidt-O'Keefe family was excluded, especially since they are going to benefit the most from this project. Talking earlier this year with Derek O'Keefe, he admitted that he had a water problem and now we find out that there are catch basins going to be installed in the alley when it's repaved to solve this water problem. According to the statute, again, in question 6603, or 0703, the, it falls under the category of what a special benefit is. On page four, it states, "The benefits supporting a special assessment must be unique and special and not general. To qualify as an assessable project under this statute, the improvement must confer an uncommon advantage as distinguished from a general benefit. Only public improvements which confer benefits on properties in a limited and determinable area may be specially assessed." As far as we can see, the O'Keefe Schmidt family derives an uncommon advantage from this project, having their water problem solved, which is in a limited and determinable area. So as we understand it, it is only a special benefit to them, and they aren't even paying for it. It is not a special benefit to us because those of us that live on the other end of the alley don't have a water problem. Secondly, the O'Keefs need the alley to go in and out of their property. They have no other access except for that. So isn't that a special benefit also? I live on the corner of Sixth and River, and I don't even use the alley, and I never have for the 15 years that I lived there. My driveway is on the riverside of the street. So I'm willing to pay for this assessment. However, I will derive no benefit or use from this alley that is being redone. And we, I think as neighbors, don't mind paying as long as it's being done equitably and everybody pays their share. And in your letter, you said that it was under the police powers that you were doing this. And in looking in that League of Wisconsin Municipality manuals, it says, "Under police power, some special benefit must accrue to properties in order to be burdened with a special assessment. And extensive, and existence of special benefits to each property assessed must always be the guiding principle." It also says that under police power assessment, it must confer, and this is word for word from the manual, "Must confer some special benefit and not, must not be arbitrary or allocated unequally or unfairly. Property specially assessed under police powers must be benefited to some extent, and method of assessment must not be reasonable, not, must be reasonable, I'm sorry, not arbitrary or capriciously burdening any group of property owners. A mere claim on the part of the governmental unit that a property is benefiting from, that is benefiting, is insufficient to support a special assessment levy." So we're asking, where is the proof that the O'Keefe Schmidt family does not derive a special benefit from this alley improvement project? As I've stated before, we as neighbors don't have a problem paying for the alley improvements, but let it be just, right, equitable, and about, and reasonable, and we should do the honorable thing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to the alley issue? Yes, ma'am. If you could give your name and address, please.
My name is Karen Klein, and I live at 1302 Sixth Street. The thing is, what, we came down today and got pictures of what they were going to do and stuff. And I know our property, all our property butts up against the alley and stuff like that, but so does theirs, according to this and what was told to us by the people here at the government building, that it was, it does butt up to there. So I think we all should be on it. They originally were on it, originally, and then the next day, they were taken off. And it's like, this is not logical to us. Like I said, we don't have a problem paying, and we're not even going to use it. I have never used it. I've never driven on it. I walk across to visit my neighbors, and that's it. Even Randy, when he used to live there. But anyway, I just think that it should be modified to, we all share.
Okay.
You know, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Move to close public hearing.
Well, we got one other thing.
We have to close it?
We got to do the.
Oh, it's the same hearing.
Yep.
Sorry, I thought it was different here.
That's all right. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the Grand View issue? Okay, sir. State your name and address, please.
Richard Stein, 914 Grand View Drive. My main thing down here tonight is to find out just exactly what is going on. And I have received a number of different explanations, and one thing that really concerns me is the driveway. At one point, I was told my driveway would be replaced. It's a McAdam driveway, and it would be replaced. This didn't seem to make an awful lot of sense to me. And I'd like to find out, is this the case? And is this covered under this assessment value? Basically, that's what I want to find out. The other issue that I do have is these flags that we have on all the properties. A lot of them are going by the wayside, I hate to tell you, because of lawn mowing and so forth. It's hard to get them back in the same place, if you can even get them back. But the wind's taken them and so forth. After a period of time, these flags, obviously, if they're going to be marking the property, have to be replaced. So that's basically the two issues that I have.
Mr. Stein, who told you that they were going to replace your entire driveway?
I understood the finance officer. Now, I may have misunderstood what he said.
Okay.
But either way, I mean, you just, you know, I looked at that, and I said, well, if they're going to replace my driveway, you know, that's a pretty good deal for what you're assessing me.
Normally, it's the driveway apron.
The driveway apron?
Correct.
Okay, that was not, that was not.
Between the road and the.
Okay. Was it you that I spoke with?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's normally what the, that's what that assessment was.
Okay. Just the cement portion of it, then. They're not going to come in there and tear up my driveway and.
Four to six feet, four to eight feet, roughly.
Okay.
Yes, Karen. Why don't you come up, Karen?
I'm sorry.
Yep. Karen's our engineer, city engineer.
Yeah. And we will have neighborhood meetings once the project is approved, so everyone will know what's happening. But on the driveway aprons, the homeowners on the east side, they're going to have a new concrete driveway apron that's five feet. On the west side, it's going to be seven feet, because we're going to go back up to the sidewalk that's there. And we have to cut back already two feet to put back the new concrete curb and gutter that's going in. In terms of the flags and the utility markings, if the flags go now, that's fine, because when the contractor comes in, he's going to have to do a new call. So you're going to see new paint markings and new flags out on your yard when the construction starts.
Did you say you're going to cut back two feet further than where the curb ends now for the project? What two feet are you referring to?
You got your curb and gutter going in, and when they, they're going to take out the existing curb and gutter, and they're going to put new curb and gutter in. And when they do that, they'll be cutting back about two feet beyond the existing curb and gutter.
Yeah, okay, that's my concern there. What about irrigation systems, dog fences that are placed there?
Well, those irrigation systems, if they're two feet behind the curb and gutter, that's in the city's right of way. So you'll be getting a letter about moving irrigation or moving dog fences.
When would that letter come in terms of like when the project would actually happen, given?
The project, we're going to get approval tonight, possibly to go ahead with the project. And the work on Grand View would be happening in September. So we'd be sending that letter out.
Additional costs that, you know, it's, you know, coming up, we got a big payment coming in, and now we got to work with contractors in turn to make a couple of changes and come up with some more money. So hoping that, you know, we don't have to in turn finance that too, and we get enough of leeway to take care of those things instead of just being tar into, and now we just have to repair. It'd be nice to, you know, work together on that. First, I heard that there was even a consideration for that, that's why I came.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else on Grand View? Yes?
Question, maybe you could answer it.
You need to come up, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Karen Herring, 810 Grand View Drive. And it's about the driveway. Is there any opportunity for those of us who do need a new driveway to contract with the city's contractor to have ours done at our expense at the same time if that apron is going in? Are you the one who answers that?
I can answer that. I mean, you can make a private contract with the contractor, so we can give you the name of the contractor, and you can work that out with them. But you can do it.
So when would you give us that so that we could contact them in time to get a bid and make those arrangements?
Sure. Right now, we don't know the subs. There'll be a prime contractor, and the winning bid was a Batumnas contractor. So we have to find out who his contract sub is going to be on the project. Once we get approved, I can make the call tomorrow and find out who their sub would be, and I can get you that information.
Okay, so then I call you?
Sure, we can get the information.
Okay. Anyone else on Grand View? Yes, come on up.
Dane Palmer, I'm at 806 Grand View. Just one little question I want to ask. These are forms that you send out, there's an assessment, it says preliminary. So I'm going to set aside, say, two and a half grand. What guarantee is it 10% with this? Because when it finally comes in, maybe over budget, might be 5,000. So this is only a rough estimate, so why do we know what it really will cost us?
This is it. This is the cost.
Okay, because the way it reads, at the very top, it's preliminary assessment. Doesn't say quote, doesn't say anything. To me, this is just a budget.
The copies we have say final assessments on, the ones that are here tonight, which should match.
They are final costs, and they are not an assessment, or they're not a estimate.
If there's any differences between the two.
Neil, is there any difference in the one that was sent out and the one we have in our packet tonight?
The, what was originally sent to the residents was a preliminary assessment based upon the, you know, costs provided by the Public Works Department. What's in your packet tonight is the final assessment based upon those costs.
Do you know the difference, or the, is it more or less, or in between?
Uh, let's go for one of them. I can take a quick look. The, the cost for curb and gutter was preliminarily estimated at $28 per square foot, and the bid cost was $20.80. I believe concrete sidewalk was at, I'm trying to look at it, $8. It was $7.38. So that the costs have come in less than that.
Okay.
From what you have.
So, do these folks also have the right numbers?
I am not sure what was sent out to them. $1,093.
What I have is what we got.
Okay.
Another thing.
So it'll be less than what you received?
For that project.
For this project?
Grand View.
For Grand View now. Okay?
Thank you. Another thing is.
What's your, what's your name and address again?
Dane Palmer, 806 Grand View.
Okay. Yours is 1,668 bucks. What was your preliminary?
Where did it go? Twenty, 21.
Okay, so it's about $500 less.
Yeah. Another thing, I was just curious, is it says that if we do a payment on it, it's 2% plus your rate, but we don't know what your rate is. So your going rate?
Neil, what is the borrowing rate going to be?
3%?
No, it was.
Three for.
So if your rate is 3%, we're paying 5?
That's correct. It was right around 3%. Not exactly, but, you know, give or take, I think a tenth of a percent.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anyone else on Grand View? Thank you, sir. Yes, sir?
My name is Wayne Nelson, and I live, I don't live at 1205 Grand View, but I own the house at 1205 Grand View.
Okay.
And I'm in the process of changing the renters I have there, probably September 1st into September 15th. How is this going to affect my driveway and people trying to move in and out of there? How long, I mean, are we going to have, be able to get in and out of the driveway while this is being done?
Karen, you want to talk about that issue?
Yes. What day did you say? September?
I'm flexible, but I think it's going to be between the 1st and 15th somewhere in there.
Okay.
Okay.
Tell us about whether it's going to stay open, not stay open, the time element for the project.
Sure. During the construction, homeowners will have access to their homes. Driveways, there's going to be a couple days when we put in the curb and gutter, you can't drive over it. It's usually like three to five days. And then once a concrete driveway apron goes in, that's going to be seven days you can't drive over your concrete apron.
We can park.
We can park on the road. You can park next to it. Although Grand View is.
Busy?
Busy.
Yeah, and I have a question about, I'm sorry, I just have one question. What about like the school bus stops and all the buses that go up and down?
No, we are going to work with, we're going to work with a garbage company. Mailboxes will be relocated to one location. We're going to talk with the school and make them aware of the project, and they can route around Grand View. So we'll be closed to through traffic. So it'll just be the homeowners that will be able to get in there. But at the end of each night, there's always access for emergency vehicles.
Any other questions?
And can you tell us the timeline again? It's in September. Do we know whose part? How long?
No, right now, we don't exactly know, because we're going to be getting the schedule from the contractor. But I see it starting in September. Water Department will be doing some work in there too, checking the valves, so there might be some notification, you'll be getting that water may be turned off. Just quickly, in my head, I'm, you know, it's going to be probably four or five weeks total, the whole project, if we don't have a rainy fall. Weather can always upset that.
So taking the whole road out, right?
Right. Right.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Two thoughts. You know, when it came to financing, you folks plan a year or two in advance for your budget. We're being asked, at least us, to come up with $2,000 by November, otherwise we're going to have to pay interest on that amount. Why couldn't the city look a year ahead and say, gee, that alley or that street needs to be replaced? Folks, this is a preliminary cost, so you can start saving money up. In this economic times that we live in, we have people that are single wage earners and people on fixed incomes who has $2,000 that they can pluck out of thin air and pay this assessment. So I think the city, and I talked with Tom Zulley and his assistant, and his assistant's words were, gee, we've never done that before, but that's not a bad idea. So it's something that may be to be looked at in the future. So when you're planning these things, give people as much advanced notice as possible. And we have no idea when the project for the alley is going to commence, whether it's this year or next year or what, just that we have to pay by November this money.
Well, there is a payment schedule if it's over a certain dollar amount. You don't have to pay it all at once.
I understand that, but then we're being dinged interest.
Right, because we borrow the money also.
Yep.
Okay.
So, but when is it going to start?
Karen?
No, but you can start saving money up for it. And you know, why would you pay for it if you know when you're going to have a product? But they know what they're going to have.
It's always to get a letter this morning, isn't it?
You know, there was always, we had to get the bids and see if the bids came in at a price that was acceptable. If the bids would have been high, they could have been all thrown out, and the project wouldn't even be starting. But the bid did come in at a good price, and I believe the council will probably be approving it tonight. The alley will probably be starting around the same time. I'm looking at the alley starting around the end of September. We do have it that we want all the concrete work done around October 15th, just so you can kind of judge, you know, when the project's going to be going. Just to let you know, you're going to see some milling overlay going on Carmichael Road just north of Vine. After that happens and that's done, you're going to see the contractor start moving in. But once we meet with the contractor and we get a schedule and know his dates, we're going to have a meeting in the neighborhood and let everybody know the schedule. You know, this week, we're looking here, this week, we're looking there. And we're going to keep somebody up to date onsite. We're going to have an inspector. Everyone's going to have his phone number, and you can call him throughout the project if you have any questions.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Can you have one?
Okay.
Sorry about this, but things come to your mind, because this is the first time I've ever done this. So when you guys tonight, after this is all said and done, and you go back to these issues, how much do you really spend time on our particular issue to discuss it so you can really hear, talk about it, what we had to say, from our point of view?
Well, it's on the agenda tonight, so we will be.
Well, no, I wasn't sure. I haven't gotten it.
It is.
Far on the agenda.
Yep.
I'm going, you know, step by step here, because I'm new at this.
Okay.
I was just wondering, and when do we get notified of this, when it's all said and done?
Tonight.
The council will take action on it tonight, making final decisions on.
Oh, okay.
The assessments, and then you will get, you know, proper, additional notification, formal notification on the amount.
But I mean.
Tonight, a decision will be made tonight on.
But it won't be told to us, it'll be written?
It'll be in public in the meeting here.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm a newbie.
Yep, that's fine.
So bear with me.
Good questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yep?
John Hooper, 1103 Grand View Drive. If this is the preliminary assessment that I have, what is our total cost then? Or is that going to be wasting everybody's time? Mine says it's 2406.
What's the, what's the last name?
Hooper, 1103 Grand View Drive.
1945-54.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
1945-54.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Yes, sir? If you'd come up so that audience on TV can hear too.
Since you mentioned assessments, I'd like to find out what mine is. Stein, 914 Grand View Drive. And I'm on a fixed income too, by the way.
1757-78.
1757?
Yep.
Can we pass this around?
Yep. We can make copies of this so everyone can see what we have.
Okay. Now, just, just one thing now, we can, because I can't come up with even that amount of money right off the bat. I mean, I'm retired on a military retired income, and it's fixed. The government hasn't decided to give us a cost of living increase lately. But I, you know, what do I, what do I do in this case? Just have it taxed on, put on my tax bill with the interest?
Correct.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. That's correct. Any other questions?
I'm just, can they all get, including the alley project too?
Yep. Making copies right now.
Yep, Neil will be bringing copies in.
And the alley project?
Yep, Neil's making copies right now.
Okay. One more time, does anybody else like to add anything or make a comment or ask a question? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion now.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that, yep.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time, I'd like to call the City Council meeting of, whoops. Oh, I forgot. We've done that one.
I thought they were.
You haven't done the curb and gutter one?
There's two.
Are they all together?
No, they weren't all together. At this point too, we'll have a special hearing about assessments for the sidewalk curb and gutter replacement project. Is there anyone here that would like to have a comment on that? Come on in.
I'm Jason Haverly. I'm at 426 Oak Street.
Okay.
And I don't currently live at that residence. We have since moved, the house is up for sale and is not currently being rented, so I was wondering if there's any way that we could get out or not have to pay that portion of our property. I mean, if I were living there, I wouldn't have any issue in paying for that. We've lived in Hudson for nine years, haven't had any complaints or caused any trouble. I was just wondering.
It goes against the property, so it would, if you didn't pay it, it would go against the property at the time of the sale.
So we'd need to sell it then? So if it were to sell then before, then it would go against the new person who's buying that property?
Depending on what you worked on the sale agreement. It would get assessed against the property. So if you didn't pay it, then the person that bought the house would have to pay it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on the sidewalk curb and gutter project? Okay. Move to close that, is there a motion to close?
I'll move to close the public hearing second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then at 6:55, we're a little short. Proposed rezoning approximately 20 acres from R1, one-family residential district, to B2, general business district, located east of Carmichael Road and south of Stage Line Road. Hudson Hospital, Inc. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to that issue about the annexation or rezoning of 20 acres? Not annexation, rezoning. One more time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to that particular issue?
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'd like to call the City Council meeting of the City of Hudson for Monday, August 6th. Order, if we could, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Mayor Burchill.
Here.
District 1 Morissette.
Here.
District 2 Yacke.
Here.
District 3 Bernard.
Here.
District 4 Teewinkle.
Here.
District 5 Hoggatt.
Here.
District 6 Vanzlo.
Here. At this point in our agenda, I ask for any comments from any of the citizens present on anything that is not on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak to the council or speak to us, now is your opportunity on any item that is not on the agenda. Okay? Consent agenda.
To approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of July 23, 2012, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $360,349.44, a detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of four regular operators licenses for the period of August 7, 2012 to June 30, 2014, and the issuance of two temporary operators licenses to be used August 27, 2012, at the Hudson Hockey Association event for the Stanley Cup visit. Additional operator license application information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of a Class B beer/Class C wine license to Michelle L. Jacobson doing business as Carbone's Downtown Hudson, 207 Second Street for the period of August 7, 2012 through June 30, 2013. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B beer and Class B wine retailer's license to the Hudson. to the Hudson Hockey Association to sell beer and wine on August twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve, from noon until midnight at eighteen twenty Hanley Road for the Stanley Cup visit event. To approve the renewal of the contract with the River Valley Deer Management, LLC, for the two thousand twelve thirteen deer control program. To place on file the quarterly report of the city clerk and San Clara EMS commission minutes of July twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve, and the community access board minutes of July twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve. That is all.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Tewinkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Hoggett?
Yes.
Van Slo?
Yes.
Okay. First item is a review and consider accepting proposal for two thousand twelve street improvements project, resolution thirteen dash twelve.
This is one, this involves the alley?
Yep.
So, why, can we get an answer why that family was removed?
I think there was two families, wasn't it, Tom? If you'd come up and, sounded like there was...
I think it was just O'Keefe and the railroad, right?
O'Keefe, yeah.
Railroad is causing this.
That was my, my thought, that all the property owners should be assessed equally.
So, who makes that, made that decision to take them off?
After speaking with Neil, that the street, alley improvement basically goes up to the O'Keefe property line and stops. So, there was some issue that, that the project wasn't going any farther beyond that point.
But if that's their only access...
Traditionally, assessments have been done on the front footage.
Yeah, the footage. I get that.
Yep. So, you'd have to make, if you mattered, make a decision, otherwise that would be your policy decision for you to make.
If we wanted to change, if I wanted to change that? Because, I mean, if that's the only way they enter their homes, I would say they...
That was my thought also, but, you know, then I think it's something that should be brought up before the council, you know, and discussed. But there was some great points that...
So, can I change this to include them in the assessment? Or not?
Well...
Can I change this, or are we stuck?
You'd have to make a determination on how you were going to change it. You would have to say...
Well, why can't, well, it could just be equally spread between all the homeowners?
Maybe I can help put it in, in, in format for you. After the hearing, the council's options are to approve the report that you have in front of you, which would not assess the additional property owners, to disapprove it, which would be to start over, to modify the report, or to refer it back to the author with directions for how to change it, to accomplish a fair and equitable assess, assessment. So, if you wanted to include those people, you could make a motion to approve the report as modified to include the, the property, the private property that's now emitted.
That's the motion I'm making. I'd like to approve the report as modified to include the O'Keefe property.
Spread the costs that's here.
Spread the costs equally between all the properties there.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Is this a, a change of our ordinance on how we do assessment?
I don't think so.
I, I can't say for sure about your ordinance. I did check the statute on this,
and my assumption is that your ordinance is, is in conformity with the statute.
Okay.
One question that your staff is going to have to answer is whether that's going to be done on rear footage then, or on some sort of an area assessment, but that's something that they can work out.
Okay. Is that clear for Thomas?
I think so.
Okay. Neil, any questions on that? Come on up.
No, I have no questions, you know, because we have the policy, and the policy does specify that the assessments be done on front-footage basis. But it, you know, that's the preferred method of assessment. So, you know, there are other, there are other, our other options, and as legal counsel had stated, you know, we had done that. We initially modified the assessment based upon front-footage for the area that's actually being redone. But obviously, there are other options to, you know, to determine what, what is the most fair and equitable way.
Okay. Alright. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution?
We have to suspend the rules.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Roll call?
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Hoggett?
Yes.
Van Slo?
Yes.
Tewinkle?
Yes.
Okay, now.
Move to approve, uh, uh, two thousand twelve streets improvement project?
For resolution?
For resolution, I can't even, I can't find it.
Resolution thirteen dash twelve.
Resolution thirteen dash twelve. Yeah, as modified, absolutely. A second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So, your request has been met.
Well, essentially, this approximately sixteen thousand, instead of being spread over eight property owners, will be spread over nine.
I can do open-heart surgery on you, but I can't, this is legal.
It worked okay, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
So, all the property owners will receive another notice with the final number.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also included your Grandview project, correct?
Yep.
Alright. Moving on to review curbs and cutter, curbs and gutter. Bids for curb and gutter replacement project, final resolution fourteen dash twelve.
Move for approval on the Zappa...
Suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call?
Morset?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Hoggett?
Yes.
Van Slo?
Yes.
Tewinkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Now.
Move to approve the curb and gutter, is there a resolution number, fourteen dash twelve? The Zappa Brothers for eighteen thousand nine hundred sixty-nine and sixty cents.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, request to amend liquor license for, that particular business has been referred back. They're gonna come back to us with a, a...
More detailed.
More detailed plan.
Okay.
And whether or not air conditioning units are gonna be moved, and so, we, they're gonna come back. They, she's looking at next spring, so there was no big hurry to get that done tonight. I think there were some questions about the roof also, that David Gray had raised, and where the location of those air conditioning units are, so, for your information. Next item on the agenda is review engineering services proposed for the Lake Malibu storm water improvement project. And I think I have this here, is everyone familiar with that project and what's going on there? I think we've talked about it before. And, if I can find it in this. The, the bid is, or not the bid, the cost is twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars. Karen's here to answer any questions any of the council will have on this particular project. Again, we would love to try and get this done this year, if we can.
If we can, weather permitting?
It's not gonna be an easy one to get fixed.
No.
Just the location, then...
There's a lot of issues with the, the site, being next to Lake Malibu. Special design, structural design, hydraulic design, so...
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions?
So, the engineering and the design is twenty-six four, that does not include the actual construction, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The cost of supervising the project, correct?
Right, right.
Project costs are gonna run two hundred and...
Two hundred ten thousand approximately?
Okay.
Hopefully, lower.
Approximately, lower.
This one could be the other way.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be the other way also.
This one's a concern, just, site access, it's gonna be difficult for the contractor to get to the site and get material to the site.
Are we guaranteed site access, or...
We're working with that right now, too, yeah, with the resident to the east of the site.
Have we had any conversation with the railroad?
Tom can talk to that one.
Tom, can you answer that question?
Yes, I have made contact with railroad a couple different times.
And what is your result?
Nothing firm at this time. They are checking into the, to make sure that, you know, checking the right-of-ways and things like that.
Okay.
I did get a faster response when I called Omaha, Nebraska, and said that we had a big washout next to the train tracks. And the people were up very fast, and they called me, in fact, they, they asked where the location was, and they, I said, "You're getting close when you find, see the caution tape." And they did find that, and they actually closed the tracks down for a while. And last I heard that they are working, trying to find, work with their real estate people, and so we can get some right-of-ways and, locations and things like that.
Okay. Any other questions for Tom or for Karen? We, we haven't voted on that, have we?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is review and consider approval, police captain description. Marty? We didn't take it up, we were waiting for you. We didn't take it up in finance.
I think we got a little busy out...
Yep.
In the city. If you'll take a look at the job description for police captain, basically what I did is I took the lieutenant's position, and then I tweaked it a little bit to obviously show the features of the police captain, obviously being second in command and so forth. With this approval, what'll end up happening is that should we, you know, sometime in the future, if at all, if we go back to a lieutenant, we'll have to go back and tweak the lieutenant's position again. So, as of right now, what you see in front of you is what I'm proposing.
Okay.
Can, can you cruise over any highlights or major changes?
Basically, what you see in the, the back two pages haven't changed. Most of what you see is what you'll see in my job description, lieutenants and, and the sergeants. Basically, the changes were in the job duties, or the distinctive shape feature of the position itself. Obviously, changing from lieutenant to police captain, responsible, directed by the chief of police to carry out, you know, existing municipal, state, and federal laws. Will hold the office upon suspension from the chief of police or the police and fire commission. I did a little tweaking in there. The old job description that was revised in two thousand and six had some percentage of exempt and non-exempt requirements. I took those out. My position as a police captain is gonna be an exempt position. He's gonna be totally exempt. There's, will not be any non-exempt qualities to it, so... Wasn't very hard to put together, we're just, like I said, just tweaking the language a little bit.
Marty, you're gonna wait to see what happens with the budget?
Correct. I'm not, I just wanna get this done, so it's out of the way. I know I've gotten some direction to what we're gonna do with the budget. Hopefully, by the end of this week, I think Devin said we'd have the forms and we'll start working on it, so, we'll have to see and wait. But I'm not looking at filling this anytime soon until I know what my budget's gonna look like. 'Cause I'm not gonna hire somebody and then have to cut them out three months from now, so...
Is, is it normal, Marty, for a police captain to supervise a data processing operation? Just seems to me to be unusual.
Well, in a large department, you would probably have a captain that oversees, you know, the records clerk area and so forth. That would be just their main responsibilities, which would be data processing and so forth. They would also overlook such things as training records. Larger departments have that. I think that's the reason it was originally put in this. Because we have to have somebody that oversees the clerical staff and their data entry. We don't have, we have an administrative assistant, but she has no supervisory responsibilities whatsoever. Obviously, because they're all in the same union, we felt it was not appropriate for somebody in the same union to be supervising.
And if it's, if it's at a captain level, should we prefer, I mean, we say we prefer a four-year college degree. But should we ask for a four-year college degree instead of just a two-year associate's degree?
We could. I think the one thing is, is that a lot of the schools where you get your graduate, your certification require a two-year college degree to get it. We definitely could up that. I don't have a problem with that. I think a lot of people that apply do have four-year college degrees.
Another option would be to make it a four-year, or would consider two-year with extensive...
Supervisory or leadership training, correct?
Or, or experience to offset it, but I'd certainly like to see a four-year degree be required, unless there's certainly work experience that would compensate for the...
We could just reword it backwards.
Yeah.
But this is minimum, so you can always aim for higher.
I'd rather aim for higher and take minimum if we have to.
Well, I mean, I guess I only speak for myself. I mean, I, I don't see where, in every aspect of life, a four-year means you're better than two-year.
You've got two years of additional education, which prepares you for a captain's position, as opposed to, I would think, you know, some other position. I mean, if it's gonna be a captain and taking over the police department, stepping in for Marty when he has to, I, I don't know. It seems to me a four-year degree should be required.
If I can just say something...
Sure.
From when I was on police and fire commission, there's a, I think, a very thorough process that is done before we get to the final candidate. I don't know if a four-year degree or a two-year degree makes a difference either. I kind of agree with Kurt Vagel. There's a, they get in pretty detailed process, and it's kind of interesting how it, how it, nine times out of, probably even more than that, the best candidate does come up on top. I don't know if it's gonna restrict the number of applicants if we do that, or... Sometimes...
I sure wouldn't want to miss a great two-year person.
Sometimes experience, yeah, can just...
Okay.
I'm, I'm just saying.
Just my thoughts. Okay.
Devin, just out of curiosity, do we have other positions within the city at that pay grade? With associate degree?
My community development, mm, no.
Okay. I mean, that's kinda what we're talking about.
If you're talking that, I mean, the community development director would require a, you know, that would be the other one that's at approximately that. It's a little less than that, but...
Finance?
And that, the finance officer and community development both would require a bachelor's degree.
And I get what you're saying, but you can go a little deeper and probably, to be a police officer, that, that's, you don't need to get, you have the four-year degree, where the other positions in the city, you probably do need to have the four-year degree to get the, to get the degree. You can't get it at a two-year school. So, I think that's what makes a difference.
I agree with that, because you can be a, a police officer on two years.
Where you can't be in, you know, city, you know, city administrator on two years. But I don't know. I, I know what you're saying.
The fact that these are minimum qualifications, we can always filter...
And that, just so you understand, the police and fire commission is the one that would do this.
Right, right.
And they, we do have a process, but...
Would you prefer more than five years of experience? Would that help? Or is that, do you feel that's sufficient to be a captain with five years?
Well, a lot of these minimum qualifications that were put in here, we're also looking at the experience within our department as well. You know, we wanted to make sure if we had a good qualified candidate that's been on the department, say, seven or eight years, we wanted them at least to be, or even five years, and they felt that that would be a good promotional opportunity for them. We wanted to be able to give them an opportunity versus saying you had to have ten or fifteen years before you could apply.
I guess I can, I agree with Rich that I would, I would like to see a four-year degree be a minimum.
Okay.
How many years did Lieutenant Atkinson have before he was, became lieutenant under his belt?
Lieutenant, how many years at college?
No, 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 no. How many years in the forest before he became lieutenant?
He came in two thousand and twelve.
He became in...
Right, but when he became supervisor.
He became in two thousand, the end of two thousand, and he got promoted at the beginning of two thousand and twelve, so he just had over ten years. He was promoted as sergeant in ninety, or two thousand and seven, under Andy Smith. So, he'd been on the department seven years before he got promoted to sergeant.
Is that generally, is that fast-paced?
That is, that is fast-paced. I made sergeant in nine years, but before that, promotions were hard to come by. They were twenty, twenty-five years before you got one. I think your dad didn't get one for almost fifteen, twenty years before you got a promotion.
Right. On, on, piggyback on that, life experience, and, and I can understand and appreciate the fact of what, or your reasoning and, and the pay scale. But at the same time, we're gonna skip over years of experience, life experience, police, police beat experience, getting their hands dirty, as they move up the ranks and, and wanna achieve those goals of captain, chief, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not willing to pass up a two-year degree for that. I certainly appreciate your opinions, but I would disagree that their life experience is probably more valuable than the shingle hanging on their wall.
I guess, I would like to see perhaps a minimum of seven years, or maybe even more for a captain. I guess is kinda where I'm going. So, if we're gonna kinda, you know, go back and forth on the college part, it's a long time since I've been in college, so, you know, but five years seems like not enough time really to me for as a minimum qualification to become a captain.
My guess is the pool coming up after that is gonna have... My guess is the pool coming up after that is gonna have a lot more than seven years' experience.
Right. No, I appreciate that.
And we also do have the one-year supervisory, so that narrows the pool even further.
That's true.
Ted Larson, did you have something you'd like to say?
My name's Paul Larson and I retired from the Hudson Police Department after thirty-nine and a half years. The idea of eliminating or just limiting to a certain four years of college, I think, is a little bit short-sighted. Experience and police experience and the field experience that our officers here at Hudson Police Department put in. Because there's a lot of times they do things that they take on supervisory roles. So, the idea that our patrol officers, detectives, and their experience that they put in here, because I've come up through the ranks and have done every job here, is invaluable. You learn out there in the job, you learn there out there in the field. It's those field works, those experiences, those communications, the public communications, the PR that the officers do, knowing the laws. A lot of times, you don't get that from a book or college. And to take those field experiences and put them into supervisory roles are invaluable. And that's what this department strives to do in training our officers as they go up. So, the minimum requirement of two years along with experience is more invaluable than somebody walking in with a four-year degree. Trust me, I've lived it, I've experienced it, and I think that would be the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Marty, would it, I kind of would John on maybe raising the the minimum of five years to possibly seven or ten. I mean, would that be unrealistic or?
And what about the supervisory side of it?
Well, you would think if you
And maybe that's, that was my only thought on, is one-year supervisory enough to?
I don't know. I'm, well, I don't know. I'm just assuming if someone's been there seven or ten years, hopefully they've been in a supervisory role by now, but I guess that's an assumption.
Oh, and we had to have minimum qualifications when we put this together, so that's originally what we came up with. I said I didn't change these minimum qualifications from when they were first adopted.
So, would that be a would that hinder things if it's seven or ten years if we?
But Kurt said it's a minimum qualifications. If you say, man, we need, we're seeing people with seven to ten. Why would we take someone unless he's, he or she is really good? Why would we take someone with two or three when we got somebody with seven or eight?
Right.
At least that would be the, you know, we're not doing the jab selection.
No, I know.
But the minimum qualifications allows you to throw out a wider net and so you can bring those people in. Granted, you could get somebody that has ten, fifteen years of supervisory experience, but the person that maybe has one or two could come out to be the
I agree with that.
Diamond in the rough.
Yeah, I just, I just do not want to miss the diamond in the rough.
Right.
Because they don't meet our qualifications.
I agree with that. We
Laurie, you have something you want to say?
Well, we require our chief of police to have a four-year degree.
Correct.
And this position is second in line. Can someone explain to me what the process would be if something happened to Marty and the captain would step in? Does police and fire commission automatically do a search to fill the position or does the captain?
Are you talking permanently or interim?
Permanently.
Permanently then?
It would go
Interim, while it happened already, the interim chief may not have the qualifications to become the permanent chief. And then they would, they would hire based on the qualifications.
And the second-in-command would take over up until the point the police and fire commission comes in, you are gonna be the interim chief. Because they could come in and say, the second-in-command, you know, we're gonna have one of the sergeants do that. They've done that in the past.
So, we just need to keep in mind that that person would not be qualified then to be anything beyond interim. And so, we're kind of setting ourselves up for you would have to hire someone from the outside. That I don't think is a good plan, but I know what you're all saying, but
No, if, to look beyond that with the captain's position, I don't know, or with the chief's position, I don't know if I'm necessarily poised with hiring someone from the outside. I think it's difficult to be a chief after you've worked with people for twenty years.
I'm, I'm just saying that you've put someone in position who's second-in-command, who would, excuse me, who would not be qualified to step into that position long-term. And so, that's, you know, we're setting ourselves up for more turnover and
And hopefully, the additional education would bring on some of the current cutting-edge skills, procedures, systems, technology, whatever might exist that someone with a two-year degree might not be exposed to and can't bring to the department. And that's what the two years of additional education would hopefully bring this person. And I have, I have no doubt that on the street, experience is extremely valuable, but you also want to have the current technology and the current information that's available out there to bring it into the department. That's all I'm saying.
Laurie brings up an interesting point. That would be a a problem if we, it could pose a problem if we hire
Can I just, I'm
Sure.
beneath the qualifications of the actual chief, but
Laurie?
We're kind of making the assumption that someone with a four-year degree doesn't have the experience. You could have someone who's two years older with a four-year degree, who has just as much experience as someone with an associate's degree. You know, so that it's not either or. You could have someone with a bachelor's degree and just as much experience, so. You know, it's not that you're getting someone less experienced because they have a bachelor's degree.
Well, I guess if that was the the assumption you were thinking I was making, that's
No, but I've kind of heard, you know, we want someone with experience. Well, someone with a bachelor's degree can have a lot of experience.
I guess I'm, I'm, it's just the way that I I mean, I received my bachelor's degree late in life. And I don't, I certainly don't think, because I didn't have it, I had a two-year. I don't think I was, in my field, I don't think I was any less qualified. I went back simply to get the shingle. And if that's all it's about, I don't want to reflect a shingle in our qualifications, so. I mean, police is just one of those fields that you are allowed to do on a two-year. You know, there's, there's fields out there that you can't, correct?
Correct.
So.
And my situation would be is if we made it a four-year degree and if that would be the requirement, I would require that it be a four-year degree in either criminal justice or law enforcement. Because there are people, I've got some in my police department that have mathematics degrees.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess if we did go four-year, I want it to be
Absolutely.
But I'm, I'm saying I prefer the two-year degree myself, because like I said, I like to cast a little bit wider net.
For what it's worth too, in terms of professional hiring in, you know, other municipal bodies, it's not unusual for the top couple of tiers of administrative folks, if the education is lacking but the experience is there, to be hired with a deadline. We want you to obtain your four-year degree within, you know, a reasonable period of time. And that's part of the performance standards against which they're evaluated as, you know, as they work the job, so you could do that too.
Sure. Also, what's your pleasure?
Well, one last comment. In this line of work, you are constantly required to receive additional training and certification on a regular basis.
Correct.
So, with experience, you're constantly being trained and updated by the state of Wisconsin, FBI, any other number of agencies that don't come from a two-year degree or a four-year school. Typically, it's, it's part of what you do on an ongoing basis.
Are we gonna require the associate's degree in something?
That's a great question. I was just reading
We could, we could require associate's degree.
Because then you could have an associate's degree in, you know, cooking
Correct.
the way it's written right now.
Well, I think it should be required in criminal science or what do you, law enforcement?
Criminal justice or law enforcement?
Yeah.
What's your pleasure, folks? Is there anyone going to make a motion to accept the job description with any amendments that you may or may not want to make?
Well, I don't sense there'll be support, but I will make the motion anyway that we approve the job description with a modification that it require a four-year college degree in police science.
Criminal justice.
Criminal justice.
Okay. Any other minimum changes that you
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
Can I ask for just a little bit amendment?
Sure.
Criminal justice, police science or other related field?
Sure.
Just in case there's something, somebody's got a four-year degree out there, but it doesn't say exactly that.
One of those two, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that okay with the motion?
Mm-hmm.
And the second?
Absolutely.
Discussion?
I'd like to see seven years of experience minimum. Where that comes into that.
Is that with a four-year degree?
Yeah.
Well, do we want to vote on the first measure or are you and then we'll go to the seven, then if you want to make a motion to change for that particular requirement? We can do that or if you want
If this motion doesn't pass, that one may.
Fair enough.
Okay. Mary, did you have something?
I just want to say that I get, I get why you guys are making the motion. Logically, I, business-wise and all that, it makes sense, but I'm just hesitant to, I'm, I'm with Kurt and I'm kind of hesitant to narrow the field and
Well, we've heard the chief himself say that he would like to be able to cast the net further.
But I get the logic behind the motion is what I'm saying.
And if he's gonna back up the police chief, but he doesn't have the qualifications to be the police chief, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. We have any other discussion that you'd like to make on this? Then I will ask for all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'll vote, I'll vote yes to pass the motion. Now, do you have a, another amendment that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we make a seven-year minimum experience based on the fact that, well, I suppose I have to wait. Amend it.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion on that particular motion?
Well, based on what I've been hearing, took a while to become sergeant, took even longer to become lieutenant, so a captain to me is somebody that could take over for the chief in an ideal situation, because it's a it's not a great position of responsibility, but every time this position turns over, it's gonna cost a lot of money to replace or make it so that so to me, it's a good logical step for that person and frankly, most people that are looking for a job or promotion that have a goal of becoming chief would try to shoot and get the qualifications to do that, so that would include getting a four-year degree, in my opinion. So, I think seven years is kind of, I don't think five years is enough, so we'll get, I think, a little bit better crop. There's a lot of people out there in criminal justice, I think, that are still looking for jobs, so I think seven years is kind of a straightforward idea for me.
Any other comments or discussion?
Well, and if five years was okay with an associate's degree, now that we're looking at someone who's been in school two years longer? I mean, seven makes sense from that regard.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, I don't know if we've had a motion to approve the job description, have we?
Laurie's
Oh, included that, okay.
Yeah, but it was just the amendment.
Then we're done.
Just for clarification, you wanted to say bachelor's degree or four-year college degree? And I know we've already made the motion and everything, but is there a difference?
I don't think there's a difference.
That's fine.
Okay.
Be nifty, sorry.
Update on projects.
Looks like the 2012 street improvements, we can get the contracts going tomorrow and get that project started. And U-line, the water mains completed on the north and east side and testing for pressure and conductivity is done, so now we'll have to do bacteria testing.
How long were they shut down, Karen? Do you know? The water, did we do it at night?
We did it at night, nine o'clock at night on Thursday, August second.
Okay, so we didn't have any problem with the neighbors or?
I'm not aware of any problems that happened.
Thank you. I had a couple of calls that they were gonna have to shut their daycare down and they have eighty kids there, so I said it was gonna be done at night.
Yeah, it was done nine PM. It was supposed to start on Thursday.
They closed their restaurant at eight too, so that worked just great. Thank you.
Good. Then we also started the construction on the procentive project. Pre-construction meeting was held. The contractors started the building excavation and then there's been some site grading out there on the project.
Okay. That's it?
Any, yeah, that's it.
Any questions for Karen? Okay, next item is consider rezoning approximately twenty acres from R1, one-family residential district to B2, general business district, located east of Carmichael Road and south of Stageline Road, Hudson Hospital, Inc., ordinance number ten dash twelve.
Parcel was recently next to the city of Hudson. Currently, the zoning is R1, one-family residential. Per our zoning code, it has to be brought in. The rezoning is consistent with the 2009 conferency plan. Police Commission recommends rezoning from R1, one-family residential to B2, general business district. I also suggest I suspend the rules and act on the ordinance tonight, so we move the construction project along.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yakub?
Yes.
Haggan?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
T Winko?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Move to adopt ordinance number ten dash twelve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications from the mayor. I think I have a recommendation on the dear management ad hoc committee. And I'm not, I have to do a couple. I I see Tom Redner, Marty Jensen, Randy Morset, Tom Zulley, Pat Casanova and Kevin Hartman. Those are my appointments. Is there a motion to approve this?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do they have to live in the city?
Yes, normally they do.
I don't think one qualifies.
Okay, I will check that out. Which person are you talking about?
Like Mr. Hartman?
Okay, I will check that out. So, subject to living within the city limits? Could you amend the motion to approve that? Has to live within the city limits?
I will, subject to your
Okay, is there, who seconded it?
I agree with that second.
You're okay with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I sent out an email to everybody today. Devin and I and Neil have been, I guess, working on the budget. It's really ugly, folks. Ugly in the sense of our revenue is forty-one thousand dollars up from last year based on preliminary numbers. And if I'm wrong, Neil, let me know.
That's the, that is the levy increase that the max we can go.
So, it's forty-one thousand dollars for our budget?
Right.
Over what we did last year.
And our revenue is, at best, will be equal from last, or the rest of the revenue.
Okay.
So, we've got health insurance increases, salary increases, cost of, of, of our fuel and all the other costs that are going up. So, I've, for you folks that are chairman of committees and budget, when the budget starts coming, take a look at a three percent reduction in your budget, and I'm not sure that's enough. So, we need to be creative on how we're gonna make this work, because there is no more money from an income side. Unless we, unless somebody is a lot smarter or has a way to find that money. But we need to be very creative in how we keep our expenses down coming up, coming forward for next year. And we look for creative ways to save money. Or if you have on the other side, ways to generate more money.
What's the good news?
That's the good news. And that's all I had. Any older person, any communications? Well, I had one more thing today. At about four o'clock, the county library, our, our motion before the
County board.
County board has been pulled, because there's some questions about whether or not it's legal to do what is going on with what we had talked about last time to lower the assessment just for our library to seventy percent. So, that was pulled this afternoon for tomorrow's meeting at nine o'clock. So, we'll have to address that issue going forward also. I mean, we had a pretty good discussion last time and whatever we talked about last time is probably now off the, off the table, so.
Will that be on the next agenda then?
On their next?
No, our next agenda.
Weren't we down to just exactly pinching on time anyway?
Right.
Right.
It just really puts us in a cram for, I don't think we can get a referendum done. It's too late. I mean, technically
The county board meets quickly and comes to some resolution.
They want us to have a resolution whether we're exempt or not exempt by September twentieth. Is that the right date, Neil? That they, they changed again today? That they, they changed again today?
They have not announced when that new date would be. Uh, one of the things that we had talked about previously was the potential to have a referendum so that we could exceed our levy limit. Uh, the deadline for that referendum is August twenty-eighth. And as it's currently, the timeframe that they're talking about is having the county administration committee discuss the matter at their August, at their August meeting, which is going to be in late August, and then make a recommendation to the county board in September. So we're probably out of the water in terms of if we were going to even look at the referendum route. So the timeline, originally, the county was looking for the various municipalities that have libraries to pass a resolution indicating whether they would meet the, uh, the exemption for the levy limit, or, or whether they would intend to meet the levy limit exemption by September one, and they have not provided that new date yet. I, in talking to the county today, that is forthcoming. Kind of a new timeline on that.
Really tough for us to know because we don't know what their assessment will be, correct?
We do not know, and it matters quite a bit whether it's, you know, seventy percent, eighty-five percent, or the current one hundred percent.
So that's going to be a real, that'll be a real hot topic coming up in the next month, too. Okay, thank you. Any older person, I guess I asked that already. Is there anybody that has anything they'd like to add? City attorney? City administrator?
Just to briefly piggyback on what Al was saying, right now, we're worst-case scenario with health insurance, you know, everything worse, we're at about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars negative to start. So, and that's with no wage increases, and so it is going to be tough. I've told the department heads at their last meeting that you're really going to have to, like Al said, be creative and come up with ideas, because there just is not a lot of fluff in the budget right now, so.
Do we know when arbitration is going to tie up?
We have not received any notification on the arbitration, even when they're here, going to have hearings.
And if that, if that.
That's not even including that.
And that would be how much if we had to include that?
What Mary's referring to is the, um, right now, we did not pay the HRA for the police officers this year. That's eighty-eight thousand dollars in addition, if we were to have to pay that.
Yes.
On a happy note.
On a hap, on that happy note, um.
One more thing, uh.
Election.
Sorry, primary election is next Tuesday. The, there are several offices, but the one contested office is for the US Senate, for the Republicans. Same polling places, same hours, seven to eight.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.